I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's start off with a roll call of board members. Peter?
Here.
Ben? Oh, I see Ben, you're on mute, Ben. Nicole?
Here.
Here.
Rocco?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
Joan?
Here.
All right, we have a full board tonight without, we don't need our alternate. And we'll start with our executive order. Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted on the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of the board members, and there's a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed, and we have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the town's bulletin board. We've emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. All right, thank you. First up on the agenda tonight is Fox Run at Fulton. I see Kelly out there waiting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This evening, we're here before you for a site plan amendment to the Fox Run project. And just to briefly bring everyone to where we are today. Again, this was a three-building project. Building B and building C have been built, and we were before previously the planning board for building A, which is the building that's closest to Fulton Street. As you know, we purchased the former Avelo properties. We consolidated those properties and sought a site plan modification from this board, which was recently approved in the beginning of this year, and just actually finalized in September, and construction has actually started out at the project site. Due to a number of issues today, we've decided to make some changes to the bedroom configurations and the unit configurations in this building. Certainly, much of that is driven because of the current COVID issues, and we would like to migrate to one- and two-bedroom apartments in this building. What we provided you tonight was the modifications that we're proposing. And I'll say that the building footprint is nearly identical to the footprint that you had just previously approved. We tried to keep the footprint in the walls of the building exactly where they were in the prior approval with one, you know, I would say minor change. There's a small bump out of the building within the building setback area. The bigger issue or the bigger modification has to do with the number of units, which has always been very closely monitored by this board because we're in the prod overlay district. Eric did a great job of providing a summary of the changes on the minutes that you have. I can go through them, but I'm a visual person, so sometimes I just need to see them. But the sum of it is, the building that you just recently approved had 57 units, and because of the changes to the bedroom configuration, we're proposing 69 units, which is well within the max number of units that were permitted. The bedroom count, however, is what's significantly reduced. So the number of bedrooms went from 142 bedrooms down to 97 bedrooms. And I just take focus of those two numbers because if you recall, this was a very complicated bulk requirement calculation. And the two numbers that are most closely monitored by this review project or this review process is the number of units and the number of bedrooms, mostly because it goes to calculations of required open space and calculations of parking. So within these changes, we're still well within the open space requirements. No, nothing is needed to change there. And we're still well within the maximum number of parking spaces or minimum number of parking spaces that we need to provide. We have also made two other changes that I'll make note of. One is, the basement always had an exposed wall that was exposed to the west, which is where the rail trail is going to be. And we decided to put six units on that side of the building, what you would call the basement level, but they're full walkout units. And we also decided to add a rooftop amenity, which seems to be a very popular amenity that people like to see in multifamily apartment buildings these days. The architecture of the building has slightly changed. Everyone probably asks why. We thought that we just wanted to provide a little bit of an update to the building. It is a Mary of the Fox Run building and the Marist College building that is just down the road from us. So we tried to blend those two buildings and come up with, I guess, a child of the two of them. And that's what we have before you tonight. So just a quick summary is, number of units changed, number of bedrooms changed. We added the rooftop terrace, added the units on the ground floor, and modifications to the architecture. While I have the floor, I'll just quickly give you an update on the number of floors questioned with the zoning administrator. Originally, we thought that we were within the bulk requirements when we moved forward with this modification. It appears that the addition of units in the lower level and the basement level, again, there's no increase in the height of the building over that which you just had previously approved, but we're simply adding units in the lower level. That constitutes a fifth floor in the building, which makes sense. And the zoning enforcement officer, I've reviewed everything with her, and we collectively believe that we need to seek an area variance for that. We are submitting our application tomorrow to the ZBA for that area variance. Again, there's no modification to the overall height of the building. It's, you know, to the inch, the exact same size. So I don't foresee too many concerns with that. However, we just note that we acknowledge that that potential variance is needed. And that is it, Mr. Chairman, if anyone has any questions.
All right, thanks, Kelly. I'll let Eric chime in with the department recommendation.
Sure, can you hear me okay?
Yep, great, Eric.
Great, all right. So yeah, as Kelly mentioned, there may be a couple of variances involved. We identified, we did provide a recommendation for the board to go either way, but in discussions with the zoning administrator and others in the last 48 hours, we're recommending a preference to defer and get some more information. And in particular, we're recommending the board consider the discussion items in our comments, site plan review comments, number one through five, regarding the addition of story, the variances involved, the patios. And in addition to, the zoning administrator will determine whether or not a variance is required. For planning, we also thought if the board is receptive to the patios, it may very well be appropriate. The board should also consider, not in here, the board might want to consider if the designated open space area should wrap around those patios or if it would like an additional increment of open space added somewhere else on the property. And the roof terraces and the architecture. You have our comments.
All right, thanks, Eric. Let me see, Don out there for adjourned?
I am out here. I think our only comment is that we will, depending upon what happens with the paving and the parking, we may need SWIP amendment, but other than that, everything's pretty good.
Okay, thanks, Eric, we got to figure out the additional impervious. All right, it says on for a public hearing, I believe. So I move we open a public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, seven to zero. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who wish to comment on this project? Star six to unmute your phone, or star nine to raise your hand, or go through the Zoom app to raise your hand? Not seeing any currently, but let's give them another minute, just in case. Yeah, no one's. All right. See, what's the deadline for? December's the middle?
The deadline for December is Monday.
It's Monday. Maybe we should, Kelly, you think you could, we're going to adjourn?
She's going to have to go to the ZBA anyway.
You gotta go to ZBA, so.
So I would say.
Go to January then.
We actually were asking if the planning board would consider tonight an approval of these amendments. We are under construction, and we are anticipating proceeding with construction. So to avoid a delay, we do understand that, you know, we brought this on ourselves, but we thought that these modifications are de minimis, really at best, holding to the nearly identical footprint, no changes in parking. We understand the need for the variance, but again, there's no modification to the height of the building. And so we don't foresee a tremendous issue there. Of course, if the ZBA denies the variance, we would have to come back to the planning board. But we're hoping that we could proceed tonight and finalize the review. And certainly, there's no members of the public that are speaking. At least close the public hearing.
Yeah, that's a consideration.
You know, we did a very lengthy seeker review of this project, as you recall, and even in the prior approval, did a, another very lengthy seeker review of the project. With respect to the impervious surface which was mentioned, it's such a small incremental increase, and we do understand that we will provide Clark Patterson Lee with the amended SWIP that they need. We're talking about 76.9% to 77.8%. So in some projects, we don't even see that modification. But we're bringing it to your attention and, you know, certainly making note of it. So we're just asking that we could continue to proceed with this matter, understanding if the ZBA were to, you know, deny the variance, we would come back before the planning board to amend the approval.
All right, I'll just mention one factor for the board's consideration. If the discussion of variances was not contemplated in the original seeker determination, so one of the discussions which is still open-ended is for the board to consider is whether or not they might want to amend the previous seeker. Just for the record, to be consistent with what's going forward, we tend to agree that the changes are not enormous, but there are a number of discussion items open. And in terms of delay to the applicant, they're free to put together their, the follow-up application. Since the zoning board typically meets a week ahead of the planning board, at most, revised, revised, revised information to the planning board could be presented for an amended approval perhaps a week after the, a week and a few days after the zoning board took action.
Yep.
Eric, if you're concluding, however, then that this is a coordinated review, the zoning board would be precluded from acting. They would have to do an uncoordinated review in their own seeker. The area variances really are a type-two action.
Right.
Lisa, do you have any thoughts on that?
I don't see why, the planning board proceeded with this as a coordinated review before, but I don't see why they can't proceed with this as an uncoordinated review at this time and allow the ZBA to make its determination at the December meeting, which I think it's likely to do. And then we could come back to this board for final approval, having everything in hand and knowing that the ZBA hasn't imposed any conditions. One of the other things that I thought was an open issue is, I think Kelly is correct that, well, in part, that she's still within the open area, the open space, but the patios for the four houses, I don't know that they were dimensioned on the plans. We think they're about 100 square feet. And so at minimum, that 500 square feet needs to be taken out of the open space calculation, which I still think leaves them with more than enough open space. But
Okay.
we need to take a look at that. And then, as Eric said, we're asking the board to determine if, you know, the open space, technically, it's allowed to be, you know, one foot off the patio is open space because it's not dedicated to one property. But it may be that the board, because now there's this encroachment into the, what was pure open space by these patios, which are for the six new units, maybe the board wants to see if they can squeeze out some open space somewhere else on the property. And that's a discussion we thought the board should have with the applicant.
All right, thanks, Lisa. Let's, before we make a motion on this, let's move around to see what the board members feel. Start with Peter.
The only question I had, Don has already addressed, and that is, to what extent, if any, does the increased impervious surface have on the SWIP? It looks like Don's going to be taking a look at that. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Kelly, is there any way that you could, you know, since there's such a fewer number of units, is there any way to reduce some of the parking that you wouldn't have to have the increased impervious?
We actually would love to reduce some of the parking. There was a parking lot that extended out really on Fulton Street that had, I think it was either seven or nine parking spaces in there. And we actually wanted to consider eliminating that. So if the board, I could certainly show it to you, or I think on the next, you know, submission, we can show where that is. But we would like to reduce and eliminate that parking lot, which would help. That would be more than the 500 square feet for the, you know, plus or minus for the patios.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's move to Ben, do you have any comments?
Not on what's been discussed, one thing I don't see in my packet. From the fire departments, since the basement was added, are they okay with all this?
I actually met with the fire department today at the site just as part of our ongoing construction coordinating with them. And I did review what we were doing, and they said that they had no issues. So they did reply, I think, back to Eric, saying that they had no comment as well.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And let me go to...
That's, I'll just agree with Kelly, the Fairview Fire had no comment.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Nicole?
With the rooftop terrace, are you putting any safety measures into effect?
Yes, I think their code requirements are for a certain height railing around the edge. Obviously, that would be, I don't mean to joke, it's, some people, I guess, wouldn't put that up, but there's a railing that's required to go up. And other than that, I'm not sure what other safety issues are needed, but there will certainly be the required railing protection up there. And there were some comments as far as the location of the rooftop deck. And the location is predicated on where the elevator shaft actually can come up and access the building, and so that's why the location was chosen where it was, so that as soon as you come out of the elevator, you have that rooftop access. So moving that would be somewhat challenging as the balance of the roof would be for HBAC units.
Now, does the rooftop, the rooftop terrace, does that go, you know, to the edge of the roof?
Nicole, you're not coming through clear again.
I'm sorry?
You speak a little louder? Somehow, somehow it changed.
I said, the rooftop terrace, does it go all the way to the edge? Are you, is it going all the way to the edge?
It does, so north or east to west, it goes all the way to the edge. North to south, it does not. So it does hug up to the street on Fulton Street side. On the inside of the facility, as you went south, which is closer to building B, that's where we have some of the HBAC units reserved area. Thank you.
All right, Rocco?
Okay, Kelly, two quick things. I know the rail trail doesn't go through there yet. I mean, there might be a future thing without, is there a proposed connection with the rail trail at all?
We would love that, you know, this entire process, we've seen no rail trail, no rail trail. And I've always said there's no rail trail. And so now we're really excited about the fact that there is a rail trail. We'd love to work with the county as they proceed in bringing that through. We're told this is going to be a much nicer or improved rail trail design, which is wider and has lighting, additional width for bikes and so forth. So we would love to make some sort of connection. We'll have to see what their design is.
Is there a way to memorialize that or to make a commitment in the plan that if and when the rail trail occurs, you'll make the connection?
Well, we would if we're allowed to. So of course, we've always wanted to make a connection to the rail trail. We've stated that on the record, so we're on the record committing to that. There can be a note on the plan if you'd like to, as long as we're allowed to have a connection. Our one concern, of course, is, we would love our residents to go onto the rail trail, but we want to be conscientious of the protection of our residents with people coming off of the rail trail and using some of the onsite amenities. So we're very anxious to have that built. We think it's advantageous for the county and the town, and of course, for our property. We did, if you remember, we built a sidewalk that brought the residents of our facility down the south side of Fulton Street. And so it actually crossed where the rail trail will be. So there is a sidewalk that will bring people from the inside of the facility to the roadside and then down the sidewalk system as well. So there will certainly be that access point, and we'd love to make another access point.
Okay, now, just another quick thing to follow up on what Nicole was saying with the rooftop, the patio. Do we have a lighting plan on that? Is it going to be pretty bright at night? What do we have there regarding the lights?
That's actually a very good question, and I saw that had come up, and we don't have a lighting plan. Most of the rooftop decks I've seen are nominal lighting, but we will get that to you, since it sounds like we're going to come back for the next submission. So I'll get a plan showing you what the lighting would look like up there. Most of the ones that I've seen and been a part of have been low lighting, but we need to be conscientious of the uplight and the neighbors as well.
Okay, yeah, well, thank you for that. But along with that, is there, are there any noise abatement measures or that can be built in to the patios or?
I'm sure that there are. It sounds as if there's some sensitivity to the roadside. If there's a sensitivity on another side, we can certainly accommodate that. The rooftop really would affect the rail trail side, which would be the west side, and the north side, which would be Fulton Street. So there is usually some sound penetrating or reducing barriers that we could put on that north side for that purpose.
All right, thank you, that's my comment.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Rocco, I think that's what we'd be looking for. There's houses across the street there.
Okay, very well.
Bob?
Yeah, it's just, actually, the question for Eric, just a clarification. When you were talking about variance, I thought you were using the plural, more than one. Is there one variance or are there more than one that's being considered?
The zoning administrator, we don't have anything, an update in writing yet from the zoning administrator, but the preliminary interpretation was that the patios would not require a variance for the 40-foot perimeter, but that they, they would need to be reconciled with the open space area, which would not necessarily be, which would only be a variance if the patios remained proposed within the 40% open space area. Since that's easily resolved by changing the boundary, that's likely not to be a variance. Then there was the question of height. She didn't have information to make a height determination. There is already, there is a variance required, according to her, for the additional story, but she didn't have the information to say for sure whether or not a height variance was required. From what Kelly said, if indeed there is no increase in the height of the building above 50 feet, then, then it would not. But that information wasn't available to her.
We did have a subsequent conversation, I did have a subsequent conversation with her and with Tom Wozniak from the building department, who was going over the code with her as well, excuse me. And I did provide her, this is after the fact, Eric, provide her with the information that there was no change in the height. I showed her the height on the plans. So she did have that on the record, and that's why she had said there was preliminarily no height variance required, but just the additional floor.
And Kelly, if for your future submission, you can detail the materials and any height on the patios, we're assuming they're at grade, and that they will either be a concrete slab or pavers at grade, because if they become a deck, as you know, then variances may be needed, et cetera. So that's why.
Thank you.
It was sort of nebulous, Bob, and that's why there was some missing information still on the plans. But at present, there's one confirmed variance, and we think that is, will be the universe.
Okay, fine, thanks. That's all I have.
All right, and Joan?
Hi, Kelly, just a quick question. On the plans that were submitted on OP1, it shows the walkway going along the south side of the building, but then it kind of bows away from the last basement unit. Are there plans to get that closer to the basement unit?
I don't think so. What we were trying to do was originally, when we didn't have basement units there, that was a shorter path for residents to take if they wanted to go down the sidewalk toward Route 9 versus, you know, we put sidewalks in and then people walk where they want to walk. And so I think we were projecting where people were going to walk. I'd like to keep it away from the patios just because, again, the patios are really like pavers, just to keep them away from someone's, in theory, backyard. But we were trying to tuck it closer to the property line, to the Westerly property line.
Oh, okay, so the intent wasn't to have that walkway access for those units? It was for access to Route 9 and the.
Correct, the latter, yes.
All right, correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks, Joan. I think you covered most of the issues that I had a concern about as well, patios and the noise, the light. I guess the rooftop issue of affecting the neighbors is one of the concerns.
Good points, yep, good points. Are there any questions, Mr. Chairman, with respect to the architecture of the building? Or is there any discussion on that as well?
I was going to ask about it, but you explained at the beginning that you were trying to, you know, marry the, you know, marry the two.
Correct.
Two styles of what's across the street versus.
Correct.
Basically, the 51 Fulton you're looking at?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. Any other board members have any comments on the architecture at this time? It looked nice to me.
Thank you.
Lisa, can I have you to chime in again about what our procedure would be if we tried to do an uncoordinated review? Does that mean we'd have to close the public hearing at this point or?
No, the board can just determine that it will be doing the uncoordinated review. You're not actually making a, any seeker determination yet.
Right.
Which would be at the next meeting, so that's fine. I think it probably, I doubt it's unlikely that members of the public will come forward, but I think it's not a bad practice just to keep the public hearing open, close it at the next meeting, and then to, assuming everything is in place and the ZBA has granted the variances, then do the seeker review and the determination on the project.
Okay, thanks, I just want to make sure that I was doing it correctly. So I move we adjourn the public hearing to December 17th, 2020. Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
And Mr. Chairman, just so it's clear on the record, if the board would entertain a motion to treat this as an uncoordinated review for an unlisted action, that would be helpful.
That's what I was planning to do. So I move for the Fox Run at Fulton, we, we treat the seeker as an uncoordinated review for an unlisted action. That's sufficient. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Joan?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven to zero, myself, aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Nicole, you want to do the last motion?
I move the planning board defer action on the Fox Run at Fulton, building A, amended site plan application, and direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of all reviewing departments and agents. reviewing departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included, but not limited to the following 12 through 20.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
All right. Look forward to seeing you in December then, Kelly. Take care.
Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Same to you.
You too.
Good Thanksgiving.
Next up, Eastdale Village, number 11. Jeff, you out there somewhere?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Good evening, board. Wonder if I could, I could share my screen. Is that acceptable?
Yep, yep. Sounds good.
Okay, so, yes, here we are again, talking about the 11th Amendment to the plan, special permit extension, and the subdivision of Lot 13 WB. I would like to take just a second and bring the board up to date with some of the activity that's going on in the site. I will be very quick. But Building B, which is right here in front of the medical building, the steel is up on the building now, so we're starting to, starting to see, you know, that building out of the ground and moving forward. Building A1, which is Rossi's Deli, is now a big hole in the ground. We've got that formed out, ready to start pouring that foundation shortly. And Buildings, Building 2, A2 as well, 3, 4, 5, and 6 will be right behind it as soon as the foundation permit has been reviewed and issued by the building departments. That'll happen really short order here, this late fall. The pool is under construction. That's also a hole in the ground. The community center is almost completely enclosed, and so the interior fit out will be continuing over the next, the next few weeks, hopefully for a CO early in the, in next year. We're looking for a certificate of occupancy for Building 2 and to have families moving in beginning December 1. And then just a few weeks later, Building 3 comes online as well. So we'll have those two, you know, three-story buildings that will be occupied. Building 4, as you may know, we have a certificate of occupancy for. And Building 5 is, again, there's a couple of weeks behind. We'll have that occupied right at the, right at the end of the year. And so that'll be, that'll be the last of our residential buildings on this side of the, of 44. And so then, really kind of the next work that'll happen, I believe, will be the, some commercial work on the other side of Eastdale Avenue here, the E buildings. And then across the street, right after the first year, we intend to break ground on Building 18, which is one of the, one of the four-story, this four-story building here, will be the next building that'll break ground beginning of the year to start, start to work on that side of 44. So again, just have an update for the board on where we are. We're really able to move ahead, and the weather's been great so far to allow this, allow this to continue. But the reason why we're here tonight, again, the 11th Amendment, there are just a couple of areas of focus and some things that changed since the last time we were here. But the area of focus has really been the Ortega lot and the addition of a new building, which we've dubbed O2, 10,000-square-foot mixed-use building on this lot with, with about 53 parking spaces here. That's been, that's been the most of the focus, an extension of the special permit because the special permit is required for mixed use with residential above commercial. So that's asking that now to be extended toward the Ortega lot. And then a subdivision of Lot 13 WB into three lots. So the, because there are individual owners of these buildings, A4, A5, I'm sorry, A5 and A6 will be individually, individually owned. And so the moving subdivision allows, allows that to take place. The, you know, some of the changes that we made since the last time we were here, there were questions about adding landscaping around the O2 building. And I just wanted to show this kind of screen view to show the landscaping and treatment on the E buildings. Again, it mirrors what's happening on the other side of Eastdale Avenue with the A buildings. We're really going to continue that, that, that concrete patio and landscaping. We have street trees and lighting down 44. We've increased the landscape buffer between this building and the Frank House. And we've added some, some foundation plantings across the front edge of the building and created a little landscaped area here in the, in the corner, so you wouldn't have views straight through this, this patio into the parking area. And while we don't have a specific tenant for this building, it's easy to imagine some restaurant use warning this as, as outdoor seating, or just in fact, what we're seeing in general, even without a, without a restaurant, the, a greater use of hardscape in, in areas like this, since we're trying to preserve this patio area, but providing some additional screening, not too different from what we're doing over here behind the, behind the E buildings. So that would be the focus of our, our landscape changes.
All right.
The, the other changes, you know, we, we talked about the, as part of the phasing, the first thing that we were asked to do was really build this, this parking area first, and then as we were better able to define the tenant both for the O2 building and the F building, we'll come back. And we've been asked to provide a note on the plan saying we won't ask for a building permit for these buildings without coming back to the planning board. So we've kind of showed the general outline of those buildings and how we believe the utilities and the water flow will work. But at this point, it's, it is purviewous pavement, which has been proposed here, and so this, this hatching and throughout this parking area. You know, one of the questions raised was, was about the amount of impervious surface on this lot. And I, we had, did get an updated SWIP to, to Don's team, and I know they've had a chance to review it. But we, this entire area will be purviewous surface here. That's, that's shaded. And then lastly, we revised the, the routing for emergencies, vehicles, fire truck coming to the site. Instead of coming in from Elizabeth Lane, it's showing the routing coming in off of, off of Founder's Way. And we, again, we've worked with the fire department on the location of the fire connection and, and addressing of the building and an appropriate fire truck routing, which again, may change based on the final configuration of this building F here. But right for now, it's, it's, it's more than adequate.
All right.
Getting a special permit, which I, we talked about, I just wasn't included on this Ortega lot, so we've, we've added that. And subdivision plan, as we talked about last month, it's those three lots, WB1, WB2, and WB3. And these lot lines run right down the center of, of the A structures, but there is a party wall between the two buildings and runs right on the, right on the lot line. And again, we've been working closely with the building department on review of those applications as well.
All right. Thanks.
That's it.
Thanks, Jeff. You go to Eric for his recommendation?
Sure. We've provided the board with a resolution for a condition, for a finding of secret consistency with the previous seeker determinations of the board, and also with a finding of consistency with the goals of the MAC district, because that's required for these, for these changes, for subdivision approval and for a conditioned special use permit and for site plan approval. We have a few comments remaining. Jeff, I think outlined the, the main discussion items pretty well. We were suggesting that the board have the note, since it's kind of unusual to have this, you know, a common site plan of development, to have the layout conditioned upon a future site plan amendment. And so, you know, we think it's a good idea to facilitate this moving forward in the parking by postponing perhaps that the lot F circulation. We are suggesting that the ORT building also be a part of that deferral, just so that, since the layout hasn't, is yet to be determined, and the two are, the circulation and layout of the two lots are so interrelated, we thought they should be treated together, so the board doesn't get too locked in, depending on that unknown future review. Otherwise, we're, we're pretty comfortable with what's there, certainly with the subdivision and special use permit. And we have some comments for the board's consideration. One minor correction of humor in comment number four, we talked about, we requested a deep fence detail, a detail for the fence with pagoda was a typographical error, should be a fence with pergola, not a pagoda. Those are our comments.
Thanks, Eric. Any thing from engineering, Don, at this time?
Things are looking pretty good. We have, I mean, we obviously have quite a few comments left, but they're all pretty minimal.
All right, thanks. I move that we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone on the call tonight which to comment on this project?
Again, you can raise your hand if you're in the Zoom meeting on your computer or star six to unmute yourself on the phone, star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone. Not seeing anybody.
Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, let's go around the board for comments on this one. Start with Joan this time.
Hi, I don't really have any comments, but we did receive a letter in our packet from, from a jointing property owner, from Jay Breck Martin, asking about the possibility of a six-foot privacy fence for the residents, I think it's a, is it Darrow, phase over there? Is that something that you could accommodate?
Absolutely. If I can share my screen again for a second, let me just.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Right. So this is, not the sheet I want. This is the, this is the landscape plan for the area, I believe, Mr. Martin's house. This is actually his garage, I believe, right here. So what we've proposed here are, is a, is a landscaping barrier, these darker circles are evergreens, the lighter ones are, are maples. And there are, there are significant utilities, drainage utilities in the ground between Buildings 12, 13 and the, and the property line. So there's not, there's not sufficient room to have the fence and the landscaping because of where we're pushed in by the, by the utilities. So we thought the landscaping was preferable if, if it's preferable to the, to the neighbors. We can put a six-foot fence, much as we did along Mr. Agrew's property on the other side of the street, in lieu of the landscaping here, or in lieu of, of much of the landscaping. We can, we can retain some of these trees, we will. But we can certainly put a, put a fence here across this whole property line if that's, if that's preferable to the board.
But that would be in lieu of the landscaping. I feel like now that we've gone down this road, that this came up previously at a prior, at the prior meeting, and I think we've probably settled on the landscaping in lieu of the fence at that time. Does that sound familiar? I just don't want to kind of go round and round on the same issue.
I mean, we kind of.
If anybody else on the board recalls.
Yeah, Joan, we had settled on the landscaping. Perhaps, Jeff, you could get a, get a feel from the, from the other neighbors as well, if, you know, which they prefer.
Happy to meet in the field and talk to, talk to, to Mr. Martin. And again, and I, I'm not sure how to, how to proceed with this. I mean, it's, we're obviously looking for an approval on this. How, how can we best?
Well, one option, I think, Jeff, might be that, you know, we, we, you've agreed to have this conversation. Maybe, you know, we help you facilitate that conversation with the neighbors or not, if you don't need that help. But that, you know, we could, that, that solution could be proposed in a future amended site plan, because I anticipate we're going to see more of those as.
You think we'll be back.
Dig into the other side of the street now, more, you know.
Right, just carefully, so.
So I, I think that would be okay. I appreciate your willingness to, you know, have the conversation with the neighbors. So maybe that's the best way to proceed.
I think so. I don't, I don't think, you know, the decision has to be made tonight for this particular application.
Okay.
Maybe, just, just one possible additional thought to that might be if, since, would be for the board, I'll just try this out, shooting from the hip, the board could, I agree, have this discussion for a future application, but since Mr. Martin expressed concern, maybe the board could authorize staff to oversee a change of the plan for that small portion of the property line, if that's, if that's what the outcome of the discussion with Mr. Martin is. And that would allow Jeff to move forward with his plans as they are.
We can do that as a condition, yep. Have staff, review with staff.
Does that work for you, Jeff?
Yes, I'm, right, the, yes, it works. Timing is everything on this. As I, I, I'm hoping that this plan can be approved and we can move ahead. And, you know, if we can even get as far as a signature, without necessarily having the resolution from, from Mr. Martin and have a decision from him. I mean, maybe it falls to the next amendment to, to make the change if necessary. I'm, I'm just hoping that we can take advantage of as much good weather as we have over the next, the next few weeks.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we hold it off for a future amendment?
Yeah.
And so that we're not slowing off the, you know, slowing the signature down on this one. We know you're going to be back. We know you're going to pursue this, so I think that would be okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
While we're talking about Mr. Martin, is something else in his letter about the hours of construction?
Yes, I, and not the first time he's raised it, and evidently not the first time we have had a, had an issue there. Although we've, again, I can do nothing but apologize. We try to stay in front of this, and it sounds like we had a morning where we didn't. And that's, we are, we try to remain vigilant there, and I guess we didn't one morning, so.
Yeah, keep on top of it. All right. All right. Anything else, Joan? Or is that?
No, that was it. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Go to Bob.
Yeah, just, I mean, if you're going to meet with Mr. Martin, there were, there were three things, and it's, I don't know if you've seen the letter, but he had another comment, so maybe you can try to resolve all of his concerns if you do meet with him. I guess the other thing, you know, is I think we should have an over-under about the number of the last alternate amended site plan. You know, is it going to be 20 or 30 or becoming a monthly privilege to see you here talking about?
I, it actually is, is a great privilege that, that the board has allowed me to be here every month. And, and your willingness to look at this plan over and over again has enabled it to move ahead, and we do appreciate it. And I, I, it's, you know, I think we got a couple more years. I don't know if I'll be here every month for the next couple of years, but that's, we certainly think we'll. think we'll be, be making changes, particularly on the commercial stuff over the next couple of years, as tenant spaces get finalized.
Right.
Well, we'll miss seeing you if you don't show up one month.
I, I will miss you.
All right. Rocco, anything?
No, I'm fine. No additional comments. Thank you.
Nicole? Ben, you had one comment. Anything else?
Nothing else.
And Peter?
The only comment I have is that this project has a lot of moving parts. And I think Mr. Kane is doing a great job bringing us up to speed.
Yep, thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Millie.
And I'll just say, yeah, I'm glad you're trying to stay on top of these things and pay attention to Mr. Martin's issues.
I, I can't remember the third item. I know it was, was, was noise and the fence.
His third item was-
I don't have it in front of me.
Third item was he was-
Had to do with building height.
His building height, he, I think he mistook that the, the building right behind him was going to be the four stories.
Right, right. That's right. No, that building stays as a two-story building. That's, you're right. That's what it was. It's the, one of the other buildings. And we did get the variances for the additional half-story on those, those buildings. So, yes. So, yeah, right, thank you.
I had a question on the, on the pervious pavement. Does, does that mean you got, you got to watch that for maintenance, to make sure you don't put sand down in the winter?
Yes, there is a little different, different protocol. And I've been in projects, you know, over the last 15 years, half a dozen of them where we've used pervious pavement. You have to vacuum it once a year because inevitably there is sand and dirt that ends up in there. So, you run a vacuum truck over the surface and take those, those finds out, so it continues to, to, to work as it's supposed to. And one of the things that, that Don's team has raised is particularly during construction, you have to be careful that you don't compact that soil layer, keep construction vehicles off of it. So, we've done per test to make sure the soils work, but they've got to work after construction, too. And that's really the, an important, an important key. So, the maintenance of it, yeah, no, no sand, treat it a little differently. But the, one of the very, very interesting things about pervious pavement is you don't get as much ice buildup, because it percolates, the snow comes off, percolates through. And so, you don't have to use the de-icers nearly as much. So, it's a, it's a very, very different way of managing your, your, your snow piles.
Sounds good, as long as that's all built into the maintenance agreements.
Absolutely.
All right, I think we're ready for motions.
I move that the planning board find that the Eastdale Village Lot 13 WB subdivision special use permit for Lot O R T and 11th Amendment site plan involve incremental changes to the Eastdale Village project of notable magnitude and scope that are non-significant and consistent with the previous seeker findings adopted March 15, 2018, amended September 17, 2020, as modified by the proposed incremental changes described in the Eastdale Village application revised September 28, 2020, with accompanying materials submitted through November 12, 2020.
Second. Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board find the proposed modifications to the area yard and bulk provisions of 210-27 are consistence with, are consistent with the goals and objectives of the town plan and Chapter 210 pertaining to the intent and purposes of the MHC district pursuant to 210-27, and that the planning board grant conditional preliminary and final major subdivision approval for the final subdivision plat showing the three subdivision of Lot 13 WB as shown on filed map number 806-T2C Eastdale Village West, subject to the following. Respond to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included, but not limited to the number of items in Section E below.
Second. Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional special use permit approval for Lot O R T and new building O2, and amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village 11th Amendment site plan, subject to the following. Respond to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included, but not limited to the following, one through nine.
Second. Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Jeff, do you have any architecture to present tonight on the O2, or the shed?
I don't. We, we were on a little later, I guess, in your agenda to talk about the pool shed. That's the only thing I have for this evening.
Okay, all right, we'll do the architecture on those at a future time. Thanks. Got a few-
Thank you.
Few adjournments to do, so. Next up is Arlington Farms, Malabar Realty. I move that we adjourn. Let's see, Eric, is there something you want to say with that?
Just a, Rich, the architect, I spoke with them. They did confirm that the applicant is doing some additional studies that the board requested at the last time this was in front of you. So, they do not expect to be, they do not expect to be making a submittal for the December meeting.
Okay.
They're looking ahead to the, possibly to the January meeting.
All right, thanks. I move that the public hearing be adjourned to January 21, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next up is Locust Grove Crossing LLC. I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to December 17, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next item, Stewart Shops at 2245 South Road. I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to December 17, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next up is Vassar Inan Institute. I move that the public hearing be adjourned to January 21, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. At this time, I move to allow public comment on any other items on tonight's agenda. Ask that you please limit your comments to no more than three minutes, and the planning board will consider the comments during this portion of the meeting, but will not respond to them.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone in the audience which to comment on any other night, items on tonight's agenda? Remember, star six to unmute your phone, or star nine to raise your hand, or raise your hand via the Zoom app.
Going once. Yeah, no, I'm not seeing any, not seeing any hands.
Right. I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven to zero. Our meeting is resumed. Next up is Jeff's back for Eastdale Village Pool Shed.
Good meeting again. Again, if I can share my screen?
Yep.
So, again, this is the, all right, architectural review for our little pool shed to house the, the equipment for the pool. And this is, again, a slightly older rendering, but the pool shed is located over here at the end of the, end of the green, behind the, the community center. So, which isn't too far from where it used to be. We're proposing to reuse the structure. It's an historic structure from the Barnes and Frank Farm. It dates from the 1850s, perhaps earlier, and used most recently as a, the corn crib before, before the farm was, was, was out of use. And you can see the location of the original corn crib was there. So, the, the new location is really kind of over here somewhere. So, not too far distant of a, of a move for the crib. Right now, if you drove down 44, you'll see it sitting somewhere over, over here, where it's been out of the way since we started working on the, on the site. It was realized it had value. It was a nice, nice, cute little building, something that could be reused when we saw it. And so, it's been, was put over there while we looked around for something that would make sense to use it for. And this is a photo of it when it was in, when it was in place. And, you know, yes, it's a little beat up, but, but surprisingly, it's perfect for what, what we want to do. And here's a, like, a better picture showing some of the, some of the, the colors of the, the weathered boards here. Naughty pine and this, this kind of reds and grays on the side, we want to maintain and, and the, you know, the siding on the, on the front end of it, you know, retaining that. And even the, even the tin roof, the oxidation, this has not, not destroyed this roof. Actually, the oxidation was, is what we like to maintain on the, on the roof in its, in its finished, finished, finished condition. Right, how do we retain that, that historic skin? Really, by reusing the materials. There's enough, enough old barn wood from the site that we saved, just for this purpose. So, it's, it's rough sawn, naughty pine, it'll be sealed to really retain that patina. The door salvaged, repaired with other barn wood from the site. And again, the tin roofing to be retained. If necessary, we may have a patch on the tin roofing, but again, in the, in kind of short order, that'll also weather to, to match the, the existing, the existing roofing. So, in, in short, it really is to, to retain this look on the, on the, on the site. And I guess one of the things that's, that's important to recognize is, you know, this shed isn't, isn't sitting by itself out in the, out in the field anymore. This is a blow-up of the landscape plan for the pool area. You can see the pool here, and the decking, and then the landscaping proposed around the, around the shed. These are arboretum here and here, hydrangea, number of grasses, ground cover. I really threw out the area to really kind of tuck it in to the, to the, to the landscape around the, around the pool. The, the doors are modified, so instead of being a door on the end, the door will be right here to allow, so, name and staff to get in and out of the, the pool and ma, and maintain the equipment as necessary.
Sounds good. Tin roof rusting. Should make a song out of that. All right, let's see. Eric, you have any comments on this one?
Uh, nope.
Thank you. Let's go around, any, any comments from the board members on the architecture?
This is Rocco. Couple of questions, Jeff. One, are you gonna put any type of plaque on there identifying the historical nature of this?
We hadn't considered that, but one of the things I'll, I'd explore is an update to the board. You know, the, we were required to put up a, photos inside the mail and leasing building which showed some of the, some of the historic nature of the farm and its structures. And what, what we've done, although nobody can see it because you're not allowed to go in there because of COVID, but, um, there, we've done it with a, with a photo display in a frame that's, that's probably got 200 photos. I'm talking, you know, like a, like a 24 by 36 frame, some 200 photos of the site, including this, this building. And it has a little, a little verbiage around the, about the, about the structures and about the, about the site. And so, that'll be kind of in a rotating, um, display. And it'll include, this building is included in that, in that display.
Would it be appropriate to maybe put a date on there, when it was originally built, without getting too much into a plaque type of thing?
We can, I can certainly look to put something on there that says circa 1850. Yeah, but, we can certainly put something on there like that, yes.
That sounds like a good idea, Rocco.
Okay. I mean, that's my comment. I like the idea. I mean, it's great that you're doing that, but I think it needs, people are going to wonder what it is, and, and the patina and stuff. Looks rather old amongst all of the new, modern, shiny buildings. But I like-
Good idea.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else, comments?
I, just a question. Did Mr. Frank tell you that was used as a corn crib?
I, no, I don't believe so. There were a number of interviews of Mr. Frank. There's also records that were uncovered by the, by the historians who reviewed that.
I've seen a lot of corn cribs. I never saw one that looked like this. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Reused a few times. Well, I think Rocco's idea is a good one to just put, you know, a little tag, at least that says, you know, circa 1850. So, it has that historic. And then, then you have the more verbiage and other photos in the mail center. So, I move we accept architecture as presented?
Second.
For the, for the pool shed, just make sure, pool shed, building S1 on Lot 3W.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you again. Enjoy your Thanksgivings.
Yep, have a Thanksgiving, Jeff.
Thank you.
Good luck with you, too.
Continue with good weather.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Next up, One Duchess Avenue. Lou, I think I saw out there.
You tapped for the developer?
How are you tonight, Lou?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. We're in the midst of review and responding to the comment letters that we received. I have with us tonight the, our engineers from C P Mail, Matt Bond and Chad, Chad, is the last name.
Chad Green.
The, I, but I'm gonna, so I'm gonna let them give you a brief overview of what's going on. But I did have a couple of questions that I wanted to clarify, more legal of nature. And I just wanted to make sure I understood what the issues are. In the comment letters, it requested a stormwater maintenance and easement, an access easement. And I was wondering if, first of all, if that comes from this board attorney, or if it comes from the town attorney. And if so, do they have their preferred form? At least, I don't know if you have the preferred form. I mean, I have one in a couple of other towns, but it's much easier to just spit out what you're comfortable with and what you've had before. So, if you could send me, I, I'll make the request, I guess, but if you could send me that form, I will, you know, try to populate the information. The second thing was, there's an issue about transportation corp because of sewer and water. And- And I don't know if that's been resolved internally yet. But essentially, what I want to explain to the board is, we're sort of, you know, we're out of the loop in a sense because between the city and the town, they're either going to, the city's gonna bill for all of the water use and then pay the town for that portion of it because there's gonna be meters on the three buildings that we're intending to develop plus the common area.
All right.
So I wanted to know if that's been resolved. And if it hasn't, maybe I should, you know, talk to somebody about that. And I had also, I think a lot of issues might be cleared up or maybe to start to clear up, be clarified by my giving over the declaration of condominium. I had sent it to Jim Nelson. I don't know, Lisa, you probably could use it as well. So I, I'll be glad to send that over. That was recorded back in January. And that essentially carved the property up. And there's now three tax lots. And the tax lots are the buildings themselves. And they are surrounded by what will be common area. In fact, it, it becomes confusing because you hear condominium and you think it's gonna be sold and it's all units. It's not. This is really about financing and the ability to put liens on each phase. So, and this is one phase, but I thought it was much easier to just identify the phases by the buildings that lie within it. So I, you know, so if there's any questions about that, I would be able to explain it. And I might be, you know, Ms. Cobb might be the one I explain it to first. So that, you know, hopefully she speaks, planning board speak, and she could explain it to you guys. But I'd be glad to, you know, discuss anything about that that you want. Again, though, it's not for selling, it's not for purposes of sales. It was for financing purposes. This will be operated as an apartment complex. And it will be essentially seamless between the city and the town, for all intents and purposes for the residents.
Yeah, that's often, that often happens for finances.
Hopefully, no one will know the difference when they walk to the pool that's on the city side from the town side. So that's that. So those are the couple of issues that I had that I wanted to clear up, you know, the storm maintenance and access easement and the the transportation corp. So I, I don't know how to address those, and I can tonight. So I just wanted to start that dialogue.
All right, we'll discuss.
I can respond to that quickly, Mr. Kaufman. The stormwater easement, we do have a form that the town prefers. I will get it to you and you can populate it. It does require town board approval, which would be made a condition of any site plan approval that the application would receive. So that's how that works. The transportation corporation is still an open question. And I suggest that we have some offline discussions because there was some information that would be helpful that you probably have. And there's information with our engineers and others. So it would probably be helpful to continue those discussions offline. Jim Nelson is the predominant attorney on that because transportation corporations are town board, not planning board.
And Lisa and Lou, this is.
I've seen the declaration of condominiums, and if I have not yet, I will reach out to you to get a copy of it. And thank you.
Excellent.
Lisa and Lou, this is Kristen. I just wanted to jump in because as of this afternoon, I actually invited the applicant to partake in a conversation with staff separately, whether that's one or two conversations, depending on the issues or nature of that, just those discussions. And the applicant is amenable to that. So we will likely be talking on Monday to set that up.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good. I was gonna recommend that too because we had
Yeah.
quite a few open issues to take out.
Yes.
You, you might wanna, so, so Lou, did you want to have Chad and Matthew speak then?
Sure. Please, Chad or Matt, would you just, you know, give a overview where we're at? And so, I mean, obviously, we're going to provide written responses to the comments. But, you know, we'll let the board know where we're at.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Lou. Thanks, planning board members. This is Chad Courts with C T Mail Associates. And we just wanted to give a very brief update for the board tonight that summarizes the changes that we presented to the planning board, in which we just received comments on. You know, just for your information, and then we're happy to answer any questions. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Matt and let him share his screen if, if that works for you guys and he can go through them.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Chad. Thank you, everybody. Bring up my screen here. Okay. So I'm just gonna, like we said briefly, run through the changes we made with the comments, not this most recent round of comments, the, the prior month. We added fire department connections at each of the buildings where requested, and also coordinated the Knox Box locations with those. Made some other amendments. Added these accessible parking signs, indicated additional entrances to the commercial and residential buildings. We also added the loading area sign as requested off of the commercial building. We now have barriers at the end of the emergency access drive for future, future work through there. And we also displayed the hydrants and the light poles on C one O two, which is the, the site layout plan. That's, that's the, the bulk of the amendments to this plan. And then, as we move on to the utility plan, we added cleanouts to each of the structures to building I J and the commercial building. We will be adding, in the most recent round of comments, there's a cleanout requested to be installed on the grease trap line. So we'll indicate a grease trap or a cleanout on that as well. And I'm moving along now to see here, the landscape plan. It was requested that the transformer pad proposed locations be added to this plan. They are now on there as well as the fire hydrant locations. Again, we'll be making a couple of minor changes to this per the most recent round of notes from the town. Those pertain mainly to hydrant visibility and making sure that there's nothing blocking the fire hydrants.
Yep.
And that's, that's the, the bulk of the, the meat and potatoes for changes to the site plans. You see overall, the, the footprint, the layout is, is generally the same. One other thing we're noting is the dumpster enclosure is, has a concrete, a four foot high kind of knee wall around it that is then wrapped in a vinyl facade for, for appearances. And that will contain the roll-off dumpsters. Is there any questions from the board?
Let me just ask a quick question on the, yeah, I was hoping you could find a better place for the dumpster versus closer to the river, but is it shared also between the residential and commercial section?
Yes.
Because that's, okay.
You know, we're in, as you, as you all know, we are operating right now and we have our, you know, the guys pick it up. And the pad will, the, the utilization of the dumpster and the garbage pickup, that will be, you know, the volume of garbage will determine the amount of pickups. If it needs to be three times a week or twice a week, whatever it'll take to make it operate smoothly. You know, because we're doing, you know, it's, it's, it's working out and we have the guys operating now. So there shouldn't be an issue. But rather, you know, rather than expand the garbage areas, we're going to have, we're gonna, you know, determine the frequency of pickup to resolve any refuse issues.
I don't think we've looked for the locations.
Right. There, just, and the other thing is, we, we did look for an alternate location for them. It's really, it's really out of the way there. And because of the permanency of the structure, I mean, it's gonna be blocked, and then it's going to have the vinyl fencing really essentially around it. It really will not, it's not gonna move forward for that now. It's not like some, it's not, it's not a flimsy structure, I think. So you should be, you should be in pretty good shape with that. The emergency access, we, we put in, you know, and it's there, but it's really about the future determination because the entrance on to, you know, Hudson River Rolling Association, that's not as retained now. However, we are gonna put in, and I believe Matt has provided the detail on the barrier that will be placed in. And essentially, that's, what do we call that, George? You know, it's the, the, the flexible tubing that appears to stop you. It's illuminated, so you don't miss it at night. But no one's running into damaging their car and more importantly, the fire truck. They're pretty clear about that. So that's just there. That's a, that's a visual determinant. That's, that'll stop it.
Okay.
Determined. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Lou.
So, you know, so anyway, these are some of the reactions we've had through the comments. And we're, you know, it's unfortunate. I would like to have a more fully response now, but we should be able to get them to you in short order.
All right, thanks for explaining that. Anything further, Matt?
You know, I, I see too, we we added some of the truck turning. Additional truck turning here. Let's see, zoom in a little bit so you can see it. And this, we will break this out as requested on the, the most recent set of comments. This will become its own plan sheet, truck turning plan. So you can see more clearly all the, the fire truck turning radius and the refuse truck, as well as the delivery truck to the commercial building.
All right, sounds good.
That's it. Thank you.
We go to Kristen for her view, and then to Liz.
Okay, great. So just for the board's own edification, just a quick summary again that this application is on for a seeker findings review, consistency review. We have Liz Axelson with C P L a part of this review effort who will be reviewing specifically the, the seeker component and the project assessment. I won't go ahead and steal her thunder. I will, I will pass that in a moment, Liz. But yes, seeker, we're looking for coastal consistency review, site plan review, aquatic resources permit review, floodplain development permit review, and architectural review. So, you know, there were a number of comments submitted to the applicant in a prior submission. The applicant has acknowledged or responded to several of those comments. Some of them, we thought there could be some more detail provided on the plans, whether it's in the plans and in writing. We are just looking to memorialize some of these responses in a more elaborate, binding way, if you will. And I, again, I had a conversation with the applicant as late as this afternoon. And, you know, we're, we're on the same page about a, a large part of those items. And we think that the applicant would benefit from a conversation offline with some of the staff. I'm talking water department, sewer department, engineering department, planning staff, both Liz and I to go over seeker and site plan review related items. Of course, the legal component will be a part of that discussion or a separate discussion as necessary. So with that, I mean, the, the comments are, are before you to review, discuss with the applicant. Two of the items were encouraging that I was going to, to have you discuss with the applicant was about the refuse enclosure, some of the truck turning templates, which thank you, Matthew, for acknowledging that you're going to pull that out onto its own plan sheet. And architectural review and how critical that is to start getting us some finite, very specific details at this time for the board's review. Because, you know, you don't want to get too far along in the way of site plan review, although there is a lot of work that has already been done. We don't want to get to the end of the project and be taking that into account. We just want to see a holistic, comprehensive plan. Everything from directional signage on the site, if there are any monument signs proposed, building signage, how lighting might factor into that. And, and so we're just looking for some more detail at this point. Conceptual really doesn't cut it anymore. And we want to understand for each of the buildings, what the appearance of each of those facades, north, south, east, west, is going to look like. And that does actually factor into the board's consideration and discussion for coastal consistency review as well. Because this, you know, this is a prominent location on the Hudson River. It is a part of the town's L W R P. So, you know, the board should be aware of that and, and factor that into its review and discussion and consideration moving forward. So with that, we're, we're certainly moving forward and looking forward to some more details on the plans. And staff from a site plan perspective is of course, and seeker, recommending deferring action with comments at this time.
All right, thanks. Yeah, it is a big project with lots of moving parts, as you say. So it's, it's good that you got that started the offline workshop with staff and get those things nailed out to not hold them up.
So Liz and Don, of course, are also on the line.
So let me go to Liz first.
Hi, my name's Liz Axelson from C P L, planning consultant to the planning board. And I did do a review dated November tenth. And, you know, I tried to be as clear as possible about what's needed. Just to be clear for the board's edification, this has been through a, a pretty major environmental impact statement review. I know Lou is aware of that with city and town, and they did their findings. And when they did their findings at the city, it was for the entire project. So then every board that is going to do something after that has to do their own seeker findings because it's a coordinated review. And so each time the applicant moves forward and is going to the next step, for example, in front of the town board to get their zoning, they had to do a project assessment, and then the town board did a findings. And so now it's time to get this project assessment in great order so that the planning board can see what it's really looking at. And as part of their seeker review, move forward to be able to do their own seeker findings. So I'm not gonna get into the nitty gritty of my comments. Kristen, you're right on. We need some, definitely some offline consultation, I think would help. We did provide the Word version of the prior project assessment, and I think the Word version of the town board seeker findings, hoping that the applicant's representatives will be able to use that. When I received this project assessment, I didn't have the benefit of response to comments. So I took a look, and at first I thought I was seeing almost the same document. But then when I started really reviewing, I could see that the applicant's folks had done some changes. So I, I went page by page, side by side to try to find those. One of the major issues is that it needs to be reframed to say now the proposed action is the site plan review and special permit. It still identifies the project as a zoning. We all know that's done. So that's just one of the things. And also, we're at the site plan level of more detailed review than a zoning review. So those are kind of my big, big questions. Some of the land development values have changed from when the town board did their zoning. And so I'd like to hear a little bit more of why those values change. They may be fine, just not clear how and why. So I look forward to the next submittal. And I don't know if the board has questions at all.
Hey, thanks, Liz. Don, you out there still?
I am still here. Our comments are, there's, there's still a lot of them. A few things have been resolved, but we look forward to having a meeting with the applicant and getting some of these things better understood.
All right, sounds good. And I know Kristen talked quite a bit about architecture. I assume that the, they're gonna try to mirror the architecture that the city has, and so it all looks like one seamless project. So that, that'll be helpful to get those those submittals. All right. Let's go around the board for comments, start with Peter.
My only comment is, Mr. Kaufman, you know, it's estimated that it took Leonardo da Vinci over 30 years to paint the Mona Lisa. I am encouraged that, you know, we're not going to duplicate this, that time space for this project. I, I can see you've made a lot of progress.
Well, I plan on being somewhere between that number and the 280 days it took to build the Empire State Building.
There you go. Thank you.
Sounds like a plan. Ben, anything? Oh, you're on mute, Ben, still.
Ben, you're on mute. Yep, you were on mute, Ben.
Man.
There you go.
There you go.
Sorry about that. No, not at this time, I think it's too soon. I, I'd like to have the applicant satisfy the planning staff more and get things in order before we start making comments. All right, thanks Ben. Nicole?
No, I think you guys have some more work to do. So I don't have any questions right now.
All right, we go to Joan.
Yeah, I have no comments or questions at this time, thank you.
Bob?
Yeah, no questions for me right now, thanks.
Rocco?
Uh, yeah, I've got a couple of comments here. First, I'd like to echo what the board is saying about getting more detail before we comment. But I, the second thing I have is that I did notice one thing. If I look on C102 and I was going through, on the west side along the Hudson River, there is a snow storage areas identified, which would be a normal thing to do. But then when I look on C105 on the landscape charts, it seems that those areas are now populated with the shrubs and with the trees. So someone help me figure out where the snow's going? If, if those snow storage areas are now full of shrubs and, and trees? Or am I reading this, these plans here incorrectly, which could be? I don't know if that's a question for Mr. Kaufman or Mr. Courts or Mr. Baum. Anyone please, please speak up.
I, I, that's not the only snow storage area, however, the...
Well, I didn't see any others, Mr. Kaufman. So maybe I'm not seeing it correct. But I, I looked and that one just really jumped out at me.
Right.
I mean, that, that might be something you could work out at the, at the workshop with the staff. I think that's, it's good to make sure that there's no overlap there, that the, that the, that the snow has a place to go, not on top of the landscaping.
Yeah, well, I don't know, if, if those are shrubs and trees, you might not be able to do that unless you ruin the shrubs and the trees.
All right. Anything else, Rocco?
Uh, no, that's it, thank you.
All right, thanks. And my comments, you know, we talked about the trash already, make sure, in landscaping around that as well. Let's see, did I have something else? I guess not at this time, I think we covered it all. I think in general, you know, the project you've been doing down there looks good. And I think it will be good in the town as well. Just got a lot of details to iron out first and get through that. So we're ready for a motion?
I move that the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, one through, no, one through 12.
Second. It's moved and seconded, called the question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks guys, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
And...
Thank you very much, happy Thanksgiving.
Liz, take care.
Thank you.
You all.
Next up is a mobile station at 3480 North Road in front of Home Depot there. Who's on representing this one?
Hi, I am Eric Rogie with Hudson Land Design.
Hey Eric.
How is everybody?
Good.
It's been a while since we've been up there with this project. I think it's been about a year since our, our first submission. This is just our second submission. We've been waiting on some architectural information from Dunkin' Donuts and it's been a slow process. We didn't want to submit a partial submission, so we were holding off on it. But it seemed that we needed to get something in just to keep, keep the project active. So that's what we did.
Okay.
A lot of the comments were tied to the, the architectural stuff, the rendering, the setback to the canopy, lighting, all those, those things. I'm going to share my screen, I'm going to show the biggest changes since the plans, since you saw them last.
Sounds good.
See if I can do this. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the first thing that we did is we, we put more detail into the retaining wall that goes around the drive-through and we provided screening as well. You can see it here. So it, it'll block the view a bit from Route 9. And then it was requested that a view profile was done, so we did that as well. So you can see.
Ah, okay.
Route, Route 9 over here, the building, the drive-through lane. So this is on the very front of the building from Route 9. And this is the small, the existing retaining wall that's going to be moved to here. And then these are the, the shrubs that will be planted there to screen. So even though they're short, the, the angles definitely block quite a bit. So I think this works pretty good.
All right.
The other change is we provided an access, a pedestrian access over to the main, the parent lot, that's Home Depot, with ramps and crosswalks. One of the comments was that we need to show that it meets ADA requirements. So I will be putting slopes and widths and all the appropriate dimensions on there. That's pretty easy. It's all drawn, it's drawn correctly, it's just, it's not labeled so you can see it. One of the other big things we did is we overlaid Hudson Heritage, that's the project to the north.
Yep.
As part of their plan, they're proposing a realignment of Winslow Gate Road. So Winslow Gate Road is here right now. And then after they're done with it, it will be over here. So we wanted to show that our, our ADA pedestrian access going down to Route 9 and the bus stop will still work in current conditions. And then after Hudson Heritage is, is constructed, this is outside of the, the area that they would disturb. And this short section of sidewalk would remain. So this, this would be the new sidewalk here. And our sidewalk could connect to that and then it would all connect together. We also did a truck turning analysis for various scenarios, different types of garbage trucks. And since this is an active site, we, we know pretty well that all these things work currently. And the other truck is a fuel delivery truck, which is, I believe, the same sized truck as what Dunkin' Donuts would use for a delivery. So that still works, it'll still stop in the same place. We're not changing the geometry of any of the, the travel path through the site. And these paths were all based on the past approved site plan for this, this, this lot as well. This, this pretty much mimics what was done before, since nothing changes, nothing changed. It should still, should still be acceptable.
Yep.
There are still a few outstanding traffic comments. I don't think the traffic engineer Mazer is on. I think he had some questions for AKRF. Would it be acceptable if, if, if Mazer contacted AKRF directly just to get some clarification on some of the comments?
Yep.
Yes, yeah.
That would be good, okay. Let me see, what else was there? One of the other things is, this is a leased area on the overall site. One of the comments we received was if the, let me show you. If the leased area has access for pedestrian and parking and maintenance to the parent parcel. We provided the lease agreement to the planning board, which I think includes everything. It's quite a lengthy document. So I think all the information is in there. So I would, if it is not sufficient, I'd, I'd like some guidance as to what the planning board would like to see for that. So I know there was some mention of easements and that type of stuff, but I'm not sure if easements would be appropriate since it's just a leased area. And if they have access over the parent parcel, it might not be necessary. I don't know if anybody has any input on that.
Do you have any comments on that Lisa?
I haven't taken a look at it yet, but I will.
Okay, thanks.
Eric, this is Eric Holman, planner. Eric Rogie, I'm just going to suggest that it's a little like asking how to spell a word and being handed the Webster's dictionary. So I think it would be suitable to maybe point out the, where in the lease the information is provided, or maybe respond to the comments with information from the lease with reference.
Okay.
You're right, it's quite, it's quite voluminous and I'm not typically, I'm a plan reader more than a lease reader.
Same here. Okay, so maybe I will have our clients look at it and put a letter together, some, some type of roadmap for you to find any information you need.
Yeah, that, that would help, just like you had Mazer addressing the comments. Have, you know, somebody who can respond to the intent, point out the appropriate information.
Okay. One of the other questions I have for you is the applications. Since this is a leased area and some of the work is now spilling outside of the leased area, does the overall parcel owner need to be an applicant as well? Are there going to be two applicants on this project?
I think it's probably preferable if they are, if they join in the application so that there's no issue with anything. So if they are amenable to that, that would be the easiest way. It is possible that we might be able to proceed with some sort of owner's consent, but I really prefer that they just join the application.
Okay, I'll have to look into that. It was, it was time consuming to get the signatures we already got from the owner. So I'm hoping it doesn't take as long again. That was about all I had, I don't know if there's any, if anybody else has any questions?
All right.
I can try to answer.
Well, we may have questions, well, thanks for the presentation. Start with Eric for recommendations.
Sure. Eric, you might want to release your screen.
Okay.
Yeah, you have the staff comments, we basically went through the previous letter. There's still a number of comments outstanding. And I'll, I'll turn AKRF loose with theirs, their comments on traffic and engineering in a minute. As far as my comments, they're there for your use and future response. The one I guess I'd point out is one, there is a, they acknowledge the zoning administrators identification of the proposed restaurant use. And the section of the code cited for that use requires a special use permit. So there will, they will, they will need to complete the special use permit portion of the application.
Okay.
And then the other, I guess the other main point is the, this district does call for drive-throughs. Typically on the side and the rear, the board expressed receptivity to having the drive-through located on the front of the building, given the constraints of the site. But they were interested in seeing it screened. We did request profiles and there is a profile shown. But the profile shown, it goes through a, the single cluster of three existing taller trees along the frontage. So we would suggest that the profile be selected for a more typical location from Route 9. And we had also requested a, a rendering or an elevate, a perspective view of the frontage inclusive, and I guess I would amend our comment to say inclusive of the landscaping. And the reason I would add that qualifier is because it proposed, the landscaping plan proposes boxwoods that are 10 feet high. And they, in my experience, they are not, they're typically shown as like two to four feet high. And so if you would take a look at the, our comments on landscaping and review the landscaping plan and verify that the proposed landscaping heights are in fact real. And then to make use of those landscape heights in the profile and the facade rendering for the board for next time.
Yep. Yeah, I would say that as well. I mean, the wall hides some of it, but the landscaping is going to be needed to, to do further screening, so. All right, thanks Eric. Don, anything from engineering?
No, this is AKRF, so we have Justin and Alex on.
We'll go on, go on to traffic.
Right, hi, Justin Seeny, civil engineer with AKRF. We're reviewing the engineering and traffic. My colleague Alex Ald is on, he'll get into the traffic in a second. On the engineering, there's really not much. The applicant did a, a good job of addressing our previous round of comments on the, the site civil side. The only thing I'd flag from our latest comment letter, and Eric touched on it a little bit, is the ADA accessibility and just demonstrating that accessible route. There's a lot of kind of nuance to that that comes from the ADA's code in terms of slopes and landings and things of that nature. I do believe there may need to expand the limit of sidewalk reconstruction along the east and south sides of the building to, to meet some of those requirements. But I think that's something that Eric from Hudson and I could kind of discuss offline in some of those nuanced ways. But otherwise, plans are in good shape from an engineering standpoint.
Okay, thanks Justin. Alex?
Hi Alex, hi, Alex Ald, AKRF, senior transportation planner. As Justin mentioned, there were a few ADA compliance comments that we had. In terms of traffic, we did have a few comments regarding parking and onsite circulation. Regarding the parking, we noticed that the parking capacity also included some of the fueling positions for the gas pumps. So, so those fueling positions were actually included in the parking supply number. So those, since those are not designated full-time parking spots, we'd like to see the parking supply modified to include just the full-time parking spots. And in terms of the onsite circulation, most of that focused on the drive-through. One thing that we did notice was that on the southern end of the drive-through exit, where the two, the bypass lane and the drive-through lane come together, they both exit as separate lanes. We're recommending that those two lanes be channelized to a single lane at the exit just to minimize conflicting turning movements. Perhaps there may be cars from the left lane trying to turn right and vice versa. So that was one of our recommendations. Also, additional pavement striping, we'd like to see the, the, the site plans modified to include additional pavement striping, particularly with the drive-through, just to designate the drive-through lane and the bypass lane to make those two lanes designated more clearly. And we noticed that the truck turning paths were also included, but we'd like to see those turning paths extended out to, to show the access to and from Route 9. So those were our, most of our major comments. And there were some technical comments I believe that we can discuss with Mazer offline.
All right, thanks Alex.
Sure.
Yeah, you put some paint on the ground, it helps people follow where to go.
Right. Oh, and one, one further comment regarding the pedestrian crossing near the drive-through entrance. We also recommended additional signage. That particular area, there's a lot of activity there, there's the dumpster, there's the drive-through entrance, you have the pedestrians crossing. So we also recommended additional signage at that location as well, just for pedestrian safety.
Okay, thanks. All right. Let's go around the board for additional comments, start with Nicole.
I think. I think a lot of it's already been covered. I might have asked this question last time, but do you know if there's going to be indoor seating?
I believe so. The clients are on, I think they're on, they might be able to answer that. I have not seen the floor plan, so I couldn't tell you for sure.
The only reason why I asked that is because that would affect the parking a little bit.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Are you on?
Yes. Yeah, this is Paul. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, how are you?
In regards to seating, can you hear me?
Yes.
In regard to seating, at this point, we cannot, you know, confirm we're going to have seating because, as we said, we're waiting on Dunkin' Donuts to provide us with a floor plan. So at this point, that, you know, we believe that's going to happen until.
Oh, you're breaking up a little, Paul. But I understand you're waiting on Dunkin' Donuts for that information, so have to get that all coordinated and make sure that the parking is satisfied by the number of seats.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see. Ben, anything?
My only question is, is there any concern with queuing during peak hours off the site, going out off the site?
I believe that was discussed in the traffic impact study, but I can't, I can't talk, I can't speak of that because I didn't put that together. But I think that was one of the main concerns all along, so I'm assuming it's discussed in there, but I can confirm that with Mazer.
Please.
Maybe Alex.
Alex, did you have a comment on, I think in your review on queuing?
We did, yes Eric. We actually did mention that we would, we were requesting additional survey data to back up the anticipated queues at the drive-through. Being that drive-through queues particularly for facilities such as this at Dunkin' Donuts, they tend to peak at different times during the day where your AM peak may vary greatly between, from the PM peak. For that reason, we were requesting survey data that the anticipated queues were based on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks Alex.
Okay, so that'll be provided then. Thank you.
All right. Peter?
My concern really, again, is as Ben mentioned, at the US, in Mazer's report, the US Route 9 Mid-Hudson Shopping Center, Marist College Drive, they're anticipating a drop to a service level of D, which I think personally, though I'm not an expert, is optimistic. I haven't had a chance to really study the report, but with the addition of 700 residential units at Hudson Heritage Next Door, I think it's going to require a better look, because I'm not really confident that the queuing there is going to work. That's my only comment for now.
I think I see nine cars in the queue there, but I'm going to make sure that's all covered.
Well, according to Mazer's report, it says that the southbound through movement, it's already backed up without Dunkin' Donuts or any other improvement.
Oh, that, okay, different. I know what you mean. All right, thanks Peter. Anything else?
No.
All right. Rocco?
Yeah, I've got a question here, maybe for Justin Seeny. Based on Paul's comment that they're waiting for Dunkin' Donuts to provide them with some plans, could that, could those plans have any effect on either the outside or any, or any of the other engineering aspects going on? Because that seems like we're missing a key part here.
My understanding is all of the improvements are kind of happening interior to the building and kind of the, kind of frame of the building is maintaining, but maybe Eric or even Paul could speak a little bit better to that. My understanding though is that they're working within their existing utility connections, door locations, things of that nature.
Yeah, I think it was minimal structural changes. If anything, there might have been a canopy over the order window. Now, that was one of the things we need to confirm, that it didn't go into the setbacks, which I don't think it does, but that was, that's one of those outstanding items we still need to confirm and lighting too.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay.
Bob, anything?
I was just.
Sorry. Something else, Rocco?
Because we're really not sure what Dunkin' Donuts may come up with here.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's it for now.
All right. Bob?
You mentioned a pedestrian walk going around and then across the other side of the street there. Is that, and you're going to look at making it ADA compliant with ramps, I think you said?
Yeah.
And are there, is there signage there that cars coming in and out have to, well, coming out have to stop? Or is it, you know, particularly with people who are, you know, ADA, they, they got to cross at their own risk? Is there some signage that, you know, helps stop the cars, lets the people get across?
We don't have anything proposed right now, but it's right just up from a stop sign, so it's not a high-speed area at least.
Yeah.
But we can look into providing some type of pedestrian crossing sign if that's required.
Isn't there, isn't Hudson Heritage going to install a crosswalk somewhere?
Yeah. Yeah, we, I don't think, let me check.
I think they are.
There is a crosswalk, but I don't have any signage there.
I think it's signalized.
Okay.
No, no, I'm talking about inside of, not on Route 9, I'm talking about into, into Home Depot.
Yep.
Yeah. And the, you mentioned, or somebody mentioned something about getting additional information about queuing lengths and see if the, you know, what the correct assessment is. Is that, they're going to provide data that's been collected in the past, or is it the new study?
I am not sure what that information is. Maybe Alex could explain that.
Sure. I, based on the review, I believe they, it was referenced that the queue estimates were based on past observations. It was a very, a very broad explanation. What we were looking for is more detail as to whether that was historical data that was researched from someone, from somewhere else, or if these were surveys that Mazer had conducted themselves. So we were just looking for the actual detailed survey data that those assumptions were based off of.
The report that we have from Mazer is dated January 9, 2020. Do you have a copy of that?
Yes, that's, that's the one that we reviewed, correct.
Okay.
Like you're looking for some additional information?
Correct.
Yeah.
In terms of the technical, right, in terms of the technical backup, typically we'll receive a technical backup where a lot of the information that's presented in the study itself is verified.
I think it'd be helpful to know if it's historical and how, how old is it or whether it's.
Right. And that's exactly what we were looking for. We're looking to see, one, is it, how recent is the data that it was based on? What was the scope of the data? What were the locations that were surveyed? Were they similar facilities? Were they in the, in the same region? And those would help us to determine what, how applicable that survey data would be to this particular site.
Okay. That's all I've got. Thank you.
All right, thanks Bob.
Thanks. John?
I have no comments at this time. Thank you.
All right, thanks. I just have one more question. Is the gas station plan to be open during construction?
I don't know if I have the answer for that. Paul, do you know what the plan is? Can you hear me?
Paul, you're muted. I don't know if you're trying to respond. There we go.
Yes, I wasn't muting myself. For now, I don't know yet, but ideally we try to keep it open if it's possible. I just, what we do usually, we do is to, we prepare a site safety plan to see how, to show how we will be able to go about that when it's possible. So when time comes, and we'll be able to provide that to the board.
Okay, yeah, just gotta make sure that's managed correctly.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks.
We've done that before, so, yeah.
That's it then, I guess we're ready for motion?
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included, but not limited to the following 1 through 8.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. Called question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes 7-0. All right, thanks guys, and happy Halloween. I mean, happy, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, thank you.
It's still October in my mind.
That was scary.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving cookies this year.
All right. Moving on to Creek Road Apartments. See reapproval, is there anyone here representing Creek Road Apartments tonight?
That's me as well.
All right.
Eric Rogie.
All right, Eric. I don't know if you had anything to say. It's not changing, I don't believe, right?
No, I think, I think the plan, the approved plans were just submitted over again. So there was, there was no changes at all.
All right.
I understand that there's some conditions related to recreation fees that need to be paid first. So we'll pass that information on to our client.
All right, sounds good. Kristin, you have some recommendation?
Yep, so it's a matter of procedure. The applicant per our town code has one year to commence construction and two years to complete it. They did seek a 90-day time extension and had started construction. Unfortunately, their, their time ran out and here we are. So the applicant and owner, they are seeking reapproval for this application. The plans are still the same. We did ask as part of their submittal for them to include an updated plan of current conditions, as there was some tree clearing that had taken place. And as Eric noted, we're just asking for a couple of corrections on the title sheet. So we will be asking for new staff signatures and your chairman's signature as well. And as Eric also pointed out, per our town code, and this was in the original site plan conditional approval, or resolution for site plan conditional approval, so it shouldn't be a surprise, but the applicant is to remit a recreation fee based on a per bedroom count. So that is going to have to be rectified prior to proceeding with work.
That is standard, yep.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks Kristin. Probably no engineering comments, Don, most likely. Anything new on this? Just reapproved?
No, we don't have anything on this.
I think we had it all worked out last time. All right.
Yep.
Let me go around the board for any comments. Peter?
The last time this application was before the board, the applicant made changes that were universally beneficial. So I think they did a nice job. So good luck.
Yep, thanks. Ben?
It's okay. Here you go.
Nicole?
I have no comments.
Rocco?
Looks good.
Bob?
That felt fine with me.
Joan? Oh, you're on mute, Joan, but.
I have no comments. Looks good.
Yep. Yeah, same thing. I remember we spent, spent quite a bit of time last time to get the parking and the buildings and the architecture and everything satisfactory to everyone, and I think it came out with a good plan, so. I move that the planning board waive the public hearing.
Again.
Moved and seconded. Called question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes 7-0. Want to continue with the motions?
I move that the planning board as lead agency hereby determines that the Creek Road Apartments project site plan reapproval would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that an environmental impact statement will not be required for the reasons set forth in the attached resolution, determination of non-significance negative declaration dated June 15, 2017.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes 7-0.
We move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the Creek Road Apartments project site plan reapproval, as depicted on the plan set dated May 26, 2015, last revised on October 16, 2018, and signed by the chairman on February 7, 2019, subject to the following A through E.
Second.
And there's a second, okay, moved and seconded to grant conditional. Called to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan again?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes 7-0.
You want me to do architecture as well?
Sure.
Okay. I move that the planning board grant architectural review reapproval for the Creek Road Apartments project as depicted on the plan set with last revision date of November 17, 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded for architecture. Called to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes 7-0. All right, back in business.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving if you're heading out.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. And that too. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Next up is a time extension for Haifa Holdings on Main Street. I move that the planning board grant two 90-day time extensions for the Haifa Holdings 819 Main Street application, moving the expiration date from November 21, 2020 forward to May 20, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes 7-0. Another time extension, Raymond Avenue School property redevelopment. I move that the planning board grant two 90-day time extensions of conditional major subdivision approval from January 12, 2021 forward to July 11, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes 7-0. And this time extension for Steward's. Shop at Six Manchester Circle. I move that the planning board. I move that the planning board grant two 90-day time extensions for the Steward's Shop at Sixth Manchester Circle application, moving the expiration date from November 21, 2020 to May 20, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Last item on our agenda tonight is referral from the town board. Go to Mike for comments on that.
So the, this referral is for a temporary townwide moratorium on the development of motor vehicle service facilities that include a gasoline filling station or sell gasoline in the town of Kipsey. So at a special meeting last week, the town board adopted a resolution proposing this moratorium for a period of 90 days to examine the, the issue of motor vehicle service facilities that include gasoline. And at this time, the planning board is being asked to simply make its advisory recommendation on the moratorium itself. The substance of any, you know, changes that may eventually be proposed to the zoning will, you know, is not yet known, although we've just started to discuss that internally this week. But, but that will come later. So this is really, again, on the, the moratorium itself. The, the town board did set a public hearing for December 2nd at 7 o'clock, and, and so they would like to have the advisory recommendation from the planning board in advance of that public hearing.
All right, thanks, Mike. I'll just go around board for comments on this one. Start with Rocco this time.
I have no comment and, and no opinion.
Bob?
Yeah, the same for me. No, no opinion, no comment.
Joan?
Yeah, I have no objection. I'm, I'm okay with it.
Rocco? I mean, I'm sorry. Nicole?
No comment.
Ben?
No comment.
And Peter?
I think the town board should use its best judgment.
Yep, it's kind of in their court. They're proud of. So I move that the planning board make no recommendation positive or negative to the town board concerning their proposed moratorium and find it that it is a matter of town board discretion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Can I ask a quick question before we close the meeting?
Yep, any other?
That is, what instrument does a turkey play? Give up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Drumsticks. Here's more. There's more. What did the turkey say to the hunter on Thanksgiving Day? Give up? Give up? He said, "Quack, quack." They just get better.
They do, I'm sure.
Definitely. Any other business before the meeting? Any motions?
No.
No one wants to make a motion?
No. I make a motion that we terminate this, this evening's meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thanks, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Halloween, Carl.
And happy Halloween.
Bye, everyone. Good night.